The time is seven PM. I'd like to call this public hearing, which is actually a continuation for case PD two five dash zero zero one, Kunsleman property, Joan map amendment. The date is August nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Roll call, please.
Ms. Adler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Pat.
Present. Mr. Snowden.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and other members of the board. The case was continued to tonight from, uh, from last month. Um, this is the proposal to rezone a property located on the south side of Brock Road from RU District to Plan Development District. It received a recommendation of denial from LUC Regional Planning Commission and a recommendation of denial from the Township Zoning Commission. At the previous hearing, uh, the board discussed, uh, discussed the case certainly as well as those recommendations, uh, and there was additional discussion about possible modifications. So, um, Mr. Griggs and I need to go over what options the board has at this point. And so the question to the board is, would you like us to do that now? Or would you like to give the applicant and the public one more opportunity to, uh, say anything else about this particular case?
I had asked you to reach out to the Kunsleman's to see if we could, I was pretty close as far as if we could do something to protect those neighbors as far as approving this. How did that go?
Um, I did reach out to Mr. Kunsleman, uh, last month to just see if we needed to set up a time to sit down and discuss that further. And he just declined to.
Okay.
To do that.
Go ahead, uh, put you in the public. I had asked.
Well, we can, uh, generally discuss the options.
Let the applicant, if they're here or present, do they want to provide any other, uh, comment on their application?
Okay.
Then we can go over options, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kunsleman, um, did you have anything else you'd like to say at this time?
No.
Okay, okay. Eric. I've got Mr. Horn, uh, signed up to, uh, speak. Uh, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Anthony Horn, ninety-three fifteen Rock Road, Plain City. Anthony Horn, ninety-three fifteen Rock Road, Plain City.
Now, it's my understanding your neighbor, did you show us on the map there where you're at?
I'm right here.
Okay, okay.
No one has reached out, said anything, say, hey, this is what's going on, this is what we'd like to do. We can definitely go along with all the things we need to say.
Okay. And I think we talked a little bit at the last meeting also.
Yes, we did.
And another neighbor of yours was here.
Yes.
We talked with him also, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we have more data this year tonight. I don't know if they have anything to say right now, maybe actually, so I don't know.
I don't have anyone else signed. Thank you.
For the record, when you say kept in the dark, are you?
They never reached out to me at all.
Are you talking about your neighbors? Or are you talking about the township?
Like you got proper notice from us about the meeting, zoning meeting.
Yes, not the town.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
The applicant.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Davis, Mr. Adler, I've talked on the phone with Mr. Horn at length about process. I'm aware that he got notice through the mail and all those things.
For the record.
Okay.
Thank you. You were here last time and I remember your testimony. And I know that we, as a board, recommended the, was it type two buffering? Was that what it was?
So, ma'am chair, um, we're gonna have Mr. Griggs go through this, but the board was discussing, um, some additional modifications, which essentially involve buffering along the property line between this, the boundary that's common to Mr. Horn's property from the development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Okay, Eric, I'd ask you to kind of put something together that I could live with and then I want to see if I can get another vote.
Um, before we do that, Mr. Chairman and other members of the board, would you just have Mr. Griggs briefly give you your options under the law just so the board is fully informed? And then when he gets to the section on approval with modifications, I'll have the modifications.
Okay, so you have a recommendation of denial from you, from the zoning commission. So you can approve that recommendation of denial. That would result in a denial of resuming. Or you can make a motion to deny the recommendation of the zoning commission, which would, in effect, approve the rezoning. And the third option under the statute is to make a motion to, um, and I don't know how, how we typically do it, but we would probably have to have a motion to deny the recommendation of the zoning commission with, with modifications.
That is correct. So, but in a sense, it's, the effect, Mr. Griggs is correct, if I'm wrong here, would be approval with additional modifications.
Correct.
So you, because it was a denial though, you would have to make a motion to deny the recommendation to the zoning commission and approve the rezoning with modifications.
It's a double negative.
It's a, it's a, yeah, and I didn't write the statute, but that's the wording that you have to use. Mr. Griggs, we have that right here.
Yeah.
That your colleague, uh, Ms. Huber wrote for me many years ago. Um, with regard to the final option, approval with modifications. The first modification, which was recommended by staff previously, is this. Various changes to the plans reflected in the versions, including exhibits dated July first. That's essentially incorporating the plans that were presented to the zoning commission. So that's the plans you received, but it's formally incorporating those plans. The second modification was this. Various changes to the regulation text reflected in the version dated July first, twenty twenty five. Again, that was incorporating some suggestions that were made at the zoning commission meeting, some suggestions that were made by my office. But ultimately, when the zoning commission recommends denial, those don't get brought in. So those are preloaded into this resolution. The last recommendation, uh, this is from Ms. Huber, who was with us in the last hearing, in her notes, uh, was that to the rear of lots one through four, that there would be additional buffering. Uh, she wrote down one hundred percent opacity, but the, but the board can require anything. And then the second was, uh, to the rear of the properties labeled Horn and Mannion Property, which are these two, oop, I have my mouse, I have my mouse here. Between the rear of these two properties, that there be some additional buffering here or such as preserving these, these existing trees. Those were the recommendations that you all discussed that Jen, and I, her modifications, thank you, uh, that I, um, that we were able to glean. So, um, I can have that finalized, that I guess that's where, that's where we're at. So those last two modifications, it's really a matter for the board right now, based upon the options that, uh, Mr. Chairman has presented and whether you want to add any additional modifications should, you could choose to. What is your expression?
Eric, where do you at with this? Approving the zoning commission. Uh, we can, we can approve of the modifications that you chose to. I, I think we can, we can do it. You cannot enforce these modifications, as I understand it. Is that correct? Is that a landscape?
We don't intend to hear this conversation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Adler, if you're asking me.
Yes, if it is, if modifications are recommended by the board, are those modifications enforced?
In this case, the modifications, if they are, if the approval was with modifications, the modifications are enforced.
Right, I, I think the question you're asking is more about landscape on actual lots. And I know that's obviously, then.
It's a challenge, but it's not impossible.
Correct.
And wasn't one of the modifications not removing the eight acres of trees?
Um, Ms. Huber did note that, uh, on the information she compiled from her notes. And, uh, she said it was applicants shall eliminate all phase two or essentially phase two would be eliminated, which is lots numbered one through twenty-four. And she put on here that that was, uh, based on her recollection. And I concur with that recollection, that you were the only trustee that said that was something you were interested in. If that's changed, you know.
I, I also, you know, would let board know that you're not required to make a decision tonight. So, uh, close the hearing. And when you close the hearing, the staff have allowed you to render a decision within twenty days for tonight. Um, so that is also another option. That decision would have to be rendered at a public meeting.
I don't want to approve the modifications and pass a resolution unless I know the Kunsleman's are accepting that because we continue it for the purpose of reconvening and discussing that, so.
So the first choice would be like to, to, to reach a general agreement on the modifications?
And if that's, yes, and if, if they're not interested.
We tried, we tried it the last time. It wasn't working very well.
Right, and so we continue it for the purpose of.
Yeah, I thought that Eric could get it figured out.
So I'd like to know on the record if the Kunsleman's are interested in the modifications now that it's been some time.
If Kunsleman in three seventeen Rock Road, um, I'm not interested in the modifications, but if that's what you guys require for the approval, if that's, if you're a disservice, it's not for, that's not for me.
So you would accept the modifications?
I don't, I don't have a choice, it's the only thing you're offering, so.
Okay.
I think, I, I don't have a chance to deny it or accept it.
Yes.
It's just your decision.
It's, it's, okay.
It's coming forward, okay.
So I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, deny the zoning commission's recommendation for, for denial.
Well, Mr. Krapp, are there, so the first modification, which I think, I don't think the app, the Kunsleman's have the problem, correct me if I'm wrong. The first modification was changes to the exhibits to incorporate the existing exhibits. The second modification was to the, the text. Okay, so does, do you want me to write, does anyone want me to write up a third recommend, a third additional modification? Or fourth?
Fourth or four, to the Jennifer Adler, what is the commission?
Do we have other neighbors here? Cause I feel like we need a little more consensus from, are there any other neighbors that need to speak before we move forward?
Hi. My name's Tracy Tinlin, ninety-three oh seven Rock Road, and we are right here. So there's no trees destined, I think, to block us off without you seeing that. Those trees stop about right here, I believe.
Okay.
And my husband just go with a beautiful addition on, and all I'm gonna be able to do is look twenty-five yards to my right, I'm gonna see a housing complex. And I just don't think that that's, that's right. We need some type of blockage as well, that's not a six-foot fence or something, like the bigger trees that they have. Something that, that we don't have to look at that as well.
Does anyone else like to speak? State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm not a neighbor, but I just had a question, I think we've been, been a few years. Uh, Joseph Unger, one zero one five nine, Plain City. There's talk about how for the ability to enforce the modifications. And I was wondering, what would the mode of enforcement be? Because you issue a violation, is there some kind of formal procedure for enforcing those modifications?
That's a great question, Mr. Unger. You and I should get together to go over the plan development, uh, zoning process. The answer is, when the zoning commission reviews detailed development plan, they would review the detailed development plan to ensure that complied with this preliminary development plan and any additional modifications. So that's the enforcement mechanism.
So there's another approval process that would be.
Correct.
If they did.
That is correct, because it is a planned district.
Okay.
And for the record, I think that the audience wants to know, if the development is underway and the buffering is not there, what is the enforcement from there?
Yeah, I, I would make them put it in ultimately through various mechanisms.
Number one, like how, how's that looking?
Um, I don't know that we have time to see when you go over the entire zoning enforcement process to give you the accurate information, so please get with me. But in short, if something is not installed as required, the, as zoning regulation requires, I have the authority to order it installed if it's not, or order compliance. Ultimately, if the applicant or property doesn't comply, then I would have to go before a judge and have the judgment doing it. That's the two, two, twenty-second version of a process that can take many months.
Got it.
Thank you.
We've had to do that before.
True.
And we've got to.
So before the board makes a motion, I think conversation should be had in terms of what a majority would look like, I don't want you to make multiple motions. So if majority is to, inclined to approve the recommendation of the zoning commission, then that's what should be made. If the board is interested in modifications, then we can proceed down modifications. So I think there needs to be some conversation. So what the board would like to see rather than just a, a, a motion.
Buffering sufficient at this point, considering we have other surrounding.
You're concerned about the buffering?
Yeah.
Your piece of.
Yeah.
Good. I am still concerned about the eight acres being removed and that not being consistent with being in a conservation district and preserving environmental features. So that's a key item for me. I'm also concerned that the applicant himself doesn't want to do this buffering and it's gonna create problems down the line. If it's not installed, as the zoning commission approves it to be installed, it would create a risk of problems for the zoning inspector and everybody else who are down the line. And that's, that's a hurdle that we don't want to create. If the applicant was wanting to do this, I would say maybe. Cause it's not, that, either case to me, there's gonna be resistance in the future, which is important.
I think that we need more time to discuss buffering along the other neighbor.
So, with that said, if there's continuing conversation, we're gonna have to continue the hearing. We're not gonna be able to close it. If the board has enough information, um, then, you know, we can close it and render a decision. But if there's, um, ongoing information that we still need to figure out, then I would recommend continuing it, not closing it.
And I would caution the other trustees, that you can't have discussion outside of a public meeting regardless of this, to make a decision. So it would have to be a public meeting.
Yeah, we know, we know that, Barry.
We're aware.
We know that, Barry.
So I don't know what other information is, is out there. I know you've heard from the residents, I know you've heard from the applicant, um. Mr. Griggs, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, if, if the board closed the hearing, let's say Mrs. Davis just wanted to see, um, the modifications committed to pen and paper or ink and paper, the ones that were suggesting or have been suggested, as well as annotated on the, on the plan sheet itself? Is that something that she and I could discuss if it's not board members discussing themselves or something?
Or I, I'd be glad to specify what I think is appropriate. I believe that with every development, we've asked for a type two, up to one hundred percent opacity over, what, the course of, is it five years?
You, you, that's been a common modification, absolutely. It's been a very common modification.
But I'd also like the Tinlins to have the opportunity to go over what that means with you possibly and discuss it before we sit here and mandate something where we don't have the neighbors on board. You know, this is in lieu of a good neighbor agreement. We have some applicants here tonight that are very happy to go and speak with their neighbors and put together a good neighbors agreement. And that kind of takes care of it on the back end. Now, it's not enforceable through the township, but there's a partnership there, uh, that is upheld. And typically, we, we don't see that there's problems with developers or a landowner developing and following through on a good neighbor agreement. Uh, in this case, it seems like it's a contentious situation between neighbors. And so rather than us asking for a good neighbor agreement to be brought before us, I'd like for, if, if you guys can't speak with the Kunsleman's or, then you need to speak and bring it back to the trustees so we can understand what makes this good for the neighborhood. So to have a holistic approach. Ed, did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Yeah, so what I would say is based upon, um, trustee Davis's comments, that sounds, I feel more comfortable if we were to continue the hearing and not close it.
Okay.
So continue to time the, please, sir. Let's, yep.
Uh, the next regular meeting of the board is the third of next month, is that correct, Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Is the second, it's Wednesday. Is the second, I hope. Mill Creek. That's right.
I'd like to make a comment also, Mr. Kunsleman, I would really love it if you would speak with Eric Snowden because I do share the feeling alongside trustee Adler that if you're not willing to do it or it's not something you want to do, are we going to see resistance? We, what we don't want to do is mandate it through a lengthy process.
Ninety-three seventeen Rock Road. There have been several instances where Eric has personally asked for our corporations who are coming in to screw the neighbors.
We are the neighbors, we live there. It's different, we are good neighbors. I don't need to.
But so we, we live there too.
Okay. Yeah, we're good neighbors. So I, I'd like to move that we continue this, uh, hearing to September third, uh, seven PM here at the township hall.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Adler.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Krapp.
Yes.
Did I respond to a comment from the audience? It is a Wednesday because this trustees are gonna be going to Mill Creek Township's meeting, uh, where they're dedicating the new fire tanker truck.
Very nice.
You guys, you did this about ten, applied with what you need or want or just do. And every time you stand up there and says you don't want to, and I don't think you play something. You speak so many good neighbors, but good neighbor, most of it is affecting people and everybody else. And guys never reached out to you. You got a chance to talk to Eric to resolve some of this. Be ignore Eric. Same thing's gonna go on. All right, come, this next meeting, ain't nothing's gonna change. He's gonna be at the stable, did he say that? You don't want to do it.
Uh, moving on, uh, the time is seven twenty-four. I'd like to call public hearing, uh, case number Z two five dash zero zero two, uh, map amendment zero, Industrial Parkway, Plain City, Ohio, four three oh six four, uh, being one hundred eighty-seven point eight one plus or minus acres, located on the east side of Industrial Parkway, south of Beecher Campbell Road, uh, rural residential district to Commerce District, Fairbanks Local School District. Roll call, please.
Ms. Adler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Krapp.
Present.
All right, Eric. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and other members of the board. This was an application received by zoning department proposing to rezone this one hundred and eighty-seven plus or minus acre parcel on the east side of Industrial Parkway, between Industrial Parkway and US thirty-three, uh, south of Beecher Campbell and north of the intersection with Taylor Road, from rural residential district to Commerce District. That's a light industry zoning district, uh, light industry and office, I should say. Um, my office sent the application to LUC Regional Planning Commission as required by law. LUC Regional Planning Commission recommended approval. The report from LUC is lit, is in your packet. It's appeared for the Township Zoning Commission on the twenty-eighth of last month. Township Zoning Commission recommended approval of the application. Uh, the site is used for agriculture and has frontage on US thirty-three. So this, this corridor here that you're seeing where my mouse is, is US thirty-three. This is Industrial Parkway. Um, it does surround, and I'm assuming this is based on the history of the site, this is probably the original farmstead, old barn and so forth. Uh, but it does surround that parcel. Uh, that parcel is not included in this application because it's under separate ownership. The purpose of the Commerce District is to provide opportunities for business uses, including warehousing, distribution and office, um, as identified on the, uh, in the flex office, light industrial, uh, section of the previous comprehensive plan. Uh, the current comprehensive plan recommends employment district for this location. So I do want to know, and I don't want to confuse anybody, but I gotta be correct. During the time this application was active, the new comprehensive plan was adopted. So when it was submitted, the old plan was in effect. Now the new plan is in effect. So I don't know that that really changes how anybody's approaching it because both recommendations are fairly, the, the recommended land use in both plans is very similar, um, if not borderline identical, but just be aware of that nuance. Um, there is a note from the county engineer, uh, about possible future infrastructure in the process, but the engineer's office has not required a traffic study at this time. That's normal for standard zoning districts because of the number of uses. Um, staff's recommendation ultimately was for approval based on the comprehensive plan, both the previous plan and current plan's recommendation for land uses to the site. Any use for, uh, proposed at the site would be required to follow the zoning regulations, including the development standards for landscaping in effect at the time, uh, that the site was developed. So, um, I also wanted to note that the property, uh, since the property is not designated solely for residential use, that any development would require the, for non-residential use would require the property to be brought into the JED, and there's a process, uh, for going through that. So that's mainly just to remind the applicant and any future folks that have access to the report, uh, that, that is necessary.
So, um, with the area that maybe you're in tonight, if you haven't met, maybe you've only by the text or whatever, but we're glad to see you here. So I've got a short, um, there's, there's about five-page document. I'm not gonna go through all of it, but I would like to share pieces of it. And I don't think, I'm assuming you cannot put it up here, which is fine, but, um, my wife has copies.
Mr. Noel, the, well, I just want to, I apologize for the interruption, but I just, you were so kind in asking me to do this because you were unwell, and I wanted to make sure to state on the record what the board just received, which you submitted via email earlier today. While we, while we normally, that's the speaker's responsibility. While we, while we normally, that's the speaker's responsibility, since you're ill, we don't want to be pressing extra drugs. Sorry, I did not want to get, I'm trying to do my best. But my wife does have copies for anybody that's interested in it. It does have a lot of detail in it, again, that I won't address, but, so, uh, I'll just pull that up. So, if you're looking, let me first of all say that I've had some involvement in working with Mr. Drucker, which is a name that I've mentioned, and it's been a very good working relationship, and I appreciate that very much. We may be, I may be putting the cart before the horse because you do not have any confirmation of what may go in this particular property or the one that was rezoned a year ago on the corner of the 188 acres, on the corner of Industrial and Beecher-Gamble. We did come up with a good neighbor agreement, which we understood from the beginning of that process that it was non-enforceable legally. It was basically handshake, and my understanding is the owner of the property at that time agreed to those terms as well. Again, it's not, it's not legally binding. It's basically saying, this as a community around this property, this is what we feel is important. They seem to understand that, and they can agree to it. So, that brings us to this property, the one that's up for rezoning tonight. We do understand that this is designed to be commercial. That's part of the comprehensive plan. I've been able to at least follow that process, totally understand it. Is it possible to put a map, not this map, but the whole area, that part of, like the land use map, for example? Sure, I can bring up that. If you can pull that up, that'd be great. The papers you have in front of you is a land use map. This is from the comprehensive plan. It's on the first page. It says figure 35, future land use map. And if you can, if you're not used to reading these maps, you may not know exactly where your particular residence is, but if you can find that, that would be helpful for you individually. Once it comes up, I'll show you where I have it. The concern that we have is not that this green area, greenish, my wife's aren't teachers, she said it's sage, so. Oh, it's blue now. Hey, things change. New school year's starting, you know, all that. But anyway, that area is slated to be, oh, that's mixed. Is, is slated to be employment area or commercial. It used to be called commercial, now it's going to be called employment. As that, as that idea was developing through the new comprehensive plan, I was actually in support. I don't like it, that my house is right in the middle of it. We've been there for over 30 years, and we love the fields and the woods, and, you know, we wish it would stay that way forever, but we know it can't. But from my perspective, having lived there and the noise that we get off of 33, I felt like, okay, that's probably the best place to put future commercial development, because I, I would not recommend people building houses close to, close to 33, okay? People down on Industrial Parkway and across the road, I believe they do not hear as near as much as what we do. We've done things in our house over the last 30 years. We run fans at night, in the morning, all the traffic coming, crank up the stereo, fill the house with music. Luckily, I have musicians, a lot of music, so that's, that's fine. Well, we've taken those kind of mediation measures as long as we've been there, especially over the last 10 years, as developments increased and got louder on the highway. So, but that's our issue. We moved out there, we built a house, 33 had been there a long time before that. We, we're not asking anybody to accept responsibility for that. So, in this area, this is what we're talking about. You see on the map, okay? So, our house is right there, back north, in that area. So, again, we get a lot of traffic noise off of 33. We also get a lot of other noise. We get commercial noise from Marysville, believe it or not, and we'll go into detail on that, but this is, this is what you're looking at, so let me point out some things here. So, on the first page, comprehensive plan is approved June 2025. So, the land use map, again, we're talking about from 42 up the flat road right here, so this area, okay? Commercial on one side, or employment on this side is supposed to be designated as agriculture or low-density conservation residential, which means fairly large lots. There's a golf course, there's a, a retreat center, which are all aware of. It's a beautiful place they've got there. So, our concern's been, on this road, if we've got two totally opposing types of land uses, how will those be, how will they be protected? All people that have homes and golf courses and things like that, how will that separate it from all the, whatever comes in there as far as commercial development? And I think the township leadership did a great job of establishing what they call a rural, rural viewscape down Industrial Parkway. So, we don't, I don't think that's been defined exactly what that looks like, but basically, when you drive down industrial, you want to feel like you're kind of in a rural atmosphere, stiff, which is what your own township has most been known for, one of the things they've been doing. So, I think that's one of those zoning requirements that has to be further developed, finalized, whatever that looks like. But if you look, those two circles on your paper there, those are two properties, one at the corner of Beecher-Gamble and Industrial, and another one right here, the ones that we discussed tonight, we've got the cross from the golf course. So, those are two, two locations where there will be some kind of commercial. We do not know, I do not know, I've been asking, I can't get anybody to give me a straight answer, and I, and because of non, non-disclosure agreements, so totally understand that. However, this summer, came home with a carload of grandkids one time and pulled in the driveway, there was a truck up by my house. It was a survey truck. And nobody in the truck, so I went looking. We've got about 35 acres total. Went to the very back of our woods, and there I found a surveyor. He had been surveying all the outlines of our 35 acres, three different parcels. And I said, who are you, what are you doing, and who gave permission to come? He said, you want me to lead you right? I said, no, you're almost finished. I showed him the last bit, okay? So, I don't know what's going on in this area, but I've got a really, really good idea. It's been verified through different channels, nothing officially. This corner appears to be an Amazon project. So, that takes us to the next page. I'm just going to read a few things from the zoning permit, zoning resolution. So, the first one, 44445.001, quote, "The purpose and intent of Commerce District is to provide, provide opportunities for business uses consisting of warehouse and distribution, flex office, merchant services, and light industry as identified in flex office, light industrial section of the comprehensive plan, and to provide standards for the development of such uses that will protect the value of adjacent properties and promote desired character of the area." Uh, the next one, item D, says manufacturing and industrial uses in this area with operations which are not intrusive by way of noise, thus odor, vibration, or present danger to surrounding uses. Commerce District uses are more intense land uses that provide employment opportunities and economic development, and should not, and should be buffered from residential uses. I think those are great statements that are in the zoning resolution, and our only question of residents, at least myself, is will they be followed and to what extent? Conditional uses, section 445.02, if you look down at this, the only number two, 2.04, it talks about general standards applicable to all conditional use permits. So, what that means is if, if the zoning requirement says certain uses are permitted for commercial, and somebody wants to do something that's not on that approved list, they can apply for a conditional use, okay? So, if someone will do that, these, these items relate. Item number one there, says will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and are forthcoming in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. With such use will not change the essential character of the same area. The next one, says will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. And finally, item number four there, says will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation that will be detrimental to property or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, or others. Those are common statements that they've all listed in the brief. Uh, the next item, number three, Jerome Township Zoning Resolution, chapter 670, we're still reading the first one there, under A, says, quote, "No land or building in any district shall be occupied or used in any manner which creates or contributes to the existence of conditions that are dangerous, injurious, harmful, noxious, or objectionable, or may otherwise adversely affect adjacent or abutting premises." Okay, let's get down to number four, new stuff. And again, it may not be applicable to local, we still no use in these areas yet. Number four says outdoor sound propagation. Ironically, I took this as just AI right off of Google. You know, I just typed in outdoor sound propagation, that's what came up. It says, "Outdoor sound propagation refers to how sound waves travel and change as they move through the open air. Several factors influence this process, including distance, atmospheric conditions, ground effects, and the presence of obstacles. Understanding these factors is crucial for controlling noise and optimizing sound in various outdoor settings." Now, I'm a musician, I'm also a musician here, so I, I dealt with HVAC companies and things like that in the past, and lots of manufacturing issues, ultimately, so I've been around a lot of this. If you look, letter B there, atmospheric conditions, just some of the highlights, temperature, wind, turbulence, humidity, pressure. I think everybody's probably familiar with those things being affected, or how you hear sound outside. But also, ground effects. Are you in a field of corn, or grass, or concrete, or on the water? That's going to, that's going to affect how receiver hears sound from wherever they are. Okay, let's, uh, topography, one of the ground effects. Hills, valleys, other terrain can block, reflect, or diffract sound. Well, unfortunately, this is all fine. There's nothing here, other than fields and a few houses. So, it's not going to be, and I'm telling you this from experience, even though I live in the woods, the other thing I learned this past week in doing some research is that part of the reason we get more noise in the woods is because actually the wind slows down when it hits trees, and then it sound drops. I didn't know that. I've been working on this issue for about the last 13 years. Okay, bear with me here, I'll try and finish in a quick second. Vayant's Technologies, I'm going to tell you a quick story. Uh, they are now called Continental down Industrial Parkway. They're actually in the city of Marysville. So, in November of 2012, after living where we lived for almost 20 years, I woke up one morning, I heard it pounding, and I described it here as a disruptive noise similar to a distant locomotive engine or a locomotive, or a large transport helicopter, so it's kind of a technical thing. And it was coming through the walls, or masturbated, I'm stuck in the floorboards. And it was kind of like we'd never heard this before. So, I went out, drove around, and I tracked it down to the facility at Vayant's. And what we believe, after two years, nobody will ever say, yes, you are correct, but unbelievable, it was an industrial compressor. I love it. bearings went bad or something, but it was pounding, nothing.
It could be a backup generator, because those are extremely loud.
Well, yeah.
I've heard it before.
Mr. Nolan? Please have it directed. Okay, okay, I'm going too long. Okay, anyway, let me, uh, let me close it up here. Please read it yourself, you can understand, but we have heard that noise at two and a half miles away from our house, okay? That's the point I want to make, two and a half miles. If you read the section about, go, uh, Amazon, go to the last page, top of the page, B, says that noise, that is center noise primarily from HVAC compact generators can travel as a gift to this, potentially affecting nearby neighbors, while the exact distance varies depending on factors like terrain, weather, building structure. Noise can be noticed walked two and a half miles away. Testify it. Yes, it can. It does, and it does. Okay, and I'll just jump down to the conclusion, yeah, we don't want to, I predict your time, I'm sorry, it's taking so long. Letter A, "We, as both longtime and new residents of property owners surrounding the future commercial development areas along Industrial Parkway are not attempting to stop or resist commercial rezoning or use. However, we do and will strongly reject any current or future commercial use that devalue the current and future livability, usability, financial value of our selected properties. The existing Jerome Township zoning resolution includes multiple, although sometimes maybe subjective, references relating to avoidance of allowing commercial development to negatively impact certain community properties in a multitude of ways. We request that the current zoning resolution be reused if possible and amended as necessary to provide inadequate and acceptable buffering screens of the rural viewscape I mentioned, along Industrial Parkway and other properties." Letter B there, "Noise propagation is determined by a multitude of environmental conditions that are continuously changing, and they are well beyond mankind's control. Therefore, the only way to achieve effective noise pollution and mitigation is to focus on the source, elimination, or containment of outdoor noise that is loud enough across property rooms, whether it's through the air or through the ground, vibration." I'll let you read the last one by yourself, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. We're, we're here to discuss the rezoning of this from rural residential to Com district. Since I've been trustee for one year and eight months, Mr. Nolan has come to like every one of the trustee meetings and spent hours and hours up here with us. Typically, we ask people to limit their comments to about three minutes at a zoning hearing, and Mr. Nolan actually prepared a packet and, and had it distributed to the trustees ahead of this meeting. Next person on the list to talk, I've got Joseph, and it begins with a W, but I can't make the rest of that out. Mitchell DeWitt?
Oh, that's me. I didn't actually have any comments, I just, I don't.
Okay, okay, thank you. Carl Sealy? Please state your name and address for the record.
Carl Sealy, 11437 Industrial Parkway, a little commercial and residential. Quick question, I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but how many people think Mike care about his neighbors in this area? Pretty obvious. So, thank you for that, thank you for the time that he put into this. I don't have the zoning knowledge that Mike or Mr. Drucker have, so I'm mostly up here with questions and kind of trying to connect between the two dots, so. I guess my first question is, how long for this to get rezoned? Does this process typically take? How long is the public involved, and how long do you guys typically take to make a decision on something of this?
I'd say this has been going on for a year.
Yeah, it went to.
This application.
LUC first, is that right, Eric? You could go over the process quickly.
In short, Mr. Sealy, I have a wonderful handout that I don't, I, I can't carry all the paperwork with me, or else I would just be rolling a cart into every meeting. I have a wonderful handout. The rezoning process is laid out by state law. It's not Jerome Township's process, it's every township's process. An applica, in this particular case, there was an application submitted to the Township Zoning Department. That application was submitted on?
And let me, I might, I don't need to regratch you or you punch it off, but that just might, this might be helpful. I guess how long is the community of us involved, and how long do we get to interact with the process?
The community can interact with their elected officials as long as the process is ongoing, so.
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be a nautical process, right? We can't just...
Every meeting that we have, the public's welcome to come, and as soon as you know about the project, it is publicly notified to anybody that's in. about the project, it is publicly, publicly notified to, to anybody that's...
Just to clarify, the process is that there's a public hearing when it comes before the zoning commission. If you sign up for the email list, you're notified when that meeting is, so the public can go to the zoning commission meeting, and based on the zoning commission meeting, it comes to the trustees next, that's where it's at right now.
Correct.
And we make our decision on this, and then it's...
Cause they're assigned on the property...
And if the public is engaged, they can be involved the whole time.
Yeah, okay. So, I would, I guess my point would be that a, a lot of folks in the community, this is extremely important to us, and we've only been brought into the fold in the past week, and apologies if we should've been brought in sooner. I know the, um, uh, the overlay district was kind of part of this, and then there was the...
Let me stop, Mr. Sealy, I'm sorry to interject here. The overlay district has nothing to do with this.
No, I, I understand, I mean, it was kind of a precursor to this, and then the comprehensive plan was a...
Has nothing to do with this application, it's only a guide. I think, if, Mr. Sealy, I'm not trying to be combative in any way.
Oh, sure.
It seems like you have more questions than, than comments, which is totally fine. You and I should get together, and let me go over the process, that might...
I think these questions would be helpful for the rest of us that live next.
Yeah, I, I guess my point, I, I am trying to ask, but I, I, my point is, I don't know, I, I don't, I'll state this as a, uh, an opinion instead of a question, uh, my opinion is, I think this is a very important, um, rezoning, it sounds to be, uh, there's already been work done on it. Uh, I don't know how much you guys take into fact the residents, the community, and your decisions, uh, I guess that is a question, but if, if there is, uh, that part of it, if there is the, uh, community and the residents factored into your decision, I think that, um, there's a lot of folks like myself that have more questions, and this is really important to us, and we'd like to know more. Um, we feel like we have not had a lot of time to be involved with this, there was a rezoning sign up, that sign has, uh, barely noticeable, and it's been falling over for the past week, so, um, yeah, just, just not a lot of, uh, I, I guess, uh, public knowledge of this particular rezoning case. I would also kind of, uh, going off of what Mike was up here talking about, there is concern in the area that there are data centers coming in, and that could be, and areas that have already been rezoned for commercial, that could be in areas that are future, that could be in this particular area. Uh, I think there would be a very strong opinion on this, and more information needed and, and discussion if this was potentially rezoned for that, with that in mind. So, I think that's important to learn, if that is behind this, and, um, it's one thing if this is getting rezoned for a commercial, this is another thing if it's getting rezoned for, you know, a data center, um, and there's knowledge of that that the rest of us are not aware of, and I think there is knowledge of that that we've not really been, uh, well...
I would say for the record, Board of Trustees does not know who the property owner is selling to, uh, we are not included in on that, I don't know if you are, I'm not, so that's...
I've not heard of a project in particular for this.
But I would like to say, so, the comprehensive plan has been available to everyone, and in this area, from my understanding, really hasn't changed much, maybe a few tweaks, but what we didn't want between Industrial Parkway and thirty-three was residential homes.
I see.
I think everybody agrees with that. I would like, so what we're trying to do is build an infrastructure pod for commercial tax revenue to fund all of our infrastructure issues that we have. Fair enough, right? Um, the overlay had in place significant buffering that Mike and I have actually talked about, it was a pretty comprehensive buffering, that didn't go through, so you are right, it predated this application, um, but I will say personally speaking, that as a trustee, I am not a fan of data centers here, I am not. I don't think that they bring jobs, and the ones that we have currently, I do not feel have been, uh, bringing in the commercial tax dollars that we would hope to put into our infrastructure pot to build, uh, new roads or fund issues that we have right now. Um, and I've brought up to our council potential, um, interest in a moratorium meeting. So, that's where I stand with data centers, uh, I think that they're an issue. Uh, so, we've not been able to flush that out as a board, uh, but this is just on the rezoning of this property, and again, we don't know what they have in mind, other than they want to rezone it, and that, and then we make our decision only based on the zoning resolutions at hand, so we can't say, "I don't like it, therefore I vote no." We have to say, "I don't like it because it doesn't, it doesn't follow this, 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 and this, there's a conflict here, or here, within our zoning resolutions."
I guess just to kind of summarize, which is basically, you can't say, "It might be this, therefore you guys have to say no."
We do not have the ability as elected officials to have any, uh, we can't guide or dictate any private property owner sale to a, a private business. We're not in the middle of that at all.
Fair enough, and I, I completely understand that, actually, that makes a lot of sense. Because I think, uh, speaking of a lot of the neighbors that I have reached out to, and some of their concerns would be that there is intent to make this a data center, whether that's known to, you know, the surveyors out from Amazon specifically looking at, I know, I have it on, on, uh, on, on the record, actually, that there's a, that specific application. So, if that has not been, you know, told to anybody, that is one of the, um, I guess objectives of, and I know that, that's not really your concern, so to speak, and it still needs to be then approved after this, right?
Well, we don't know, I mean, I'd still like to flush out my, my thoughts with legal and, and the board members, because...
Because even if it is approved commercial, and then it gets proposed to be a data center, you always saw them approve that, right? That...
Let, let me inter, let me interject here. This is, so the zoning district is called Commerce District, that Commerce District is a light industry slash office district. Data center is a permitted use at this time. That doesn't mean that the board cannot amend the, any part of the zoning resolution, including the permitted or conditionally used hate wall, okay? So, we should get together and go over that, cause it, with all due respect, I'm not saying you can't figure it out, it's just as complicated.
We see, we, we've experienced this, we see significant noise issues with other residents, um, you know, we're not in the business of water in Jerome Township, but I think from my understanding, there are water issues with this, uh, and a few other things, so if we do, um, address it, we have to have roots into the Jerome, so we'll, I think that the other board members are, at minimum, willing to discuss that alongside.
My last point, I know, I'm, sorry, I'm way over the limits, uh, I'll steal some of, some of Mike's goodwill, since he's been here much longer than me. I guess my last point would be, I, I think as a community, we'd like the chance to engage with the, uh, representatives more and learn more about this, I know there was a good neighbor agreement on the previous land that went in place, I'd like the chance to deal out with this land and just engage more in the process. I don't think they've really done a good job on this one as far as engaging the neighbors, um, and talking to us about this one at all, so, and there's a lot of back and forth on the other one, and as far as I know, there haven't been any, anybody on this.
How long has this application been in process again?
Um, this is Davis, other members of board, the application was submitted back in June, uh, and went to LUC in the zoning commission last month, again, that's consistent with, with the process. Our office put up the yellow sign, uh, the yellow sign is not something, I want to just state this, the yellow sign is not something that's required by law, it's something that the township puts out in order to get the folks that are not contiguous, because the law directs that, that our office must notice the folks who are contiguous, meaning touching. So, the yellow sign is designed to get to the next person, usually, and it's not touching. If the sign got any bigger, Peyton and I would have trouble actually lifting the sign, uh, but the issue is, we'll go out and check and make sure that is, we'll make sure that it gets set back up.
Is the application I pulled up that this year was part of from before a different?
Was a different application, yeah.
I just feel like...
Yeah, sure, and it, and I think that they're lumping everything into, that's gone on with previous developments into this project, and if I was in their shoes, that'd be the easy button, I would probably do that too, but unfortunately, I'm on the other side, and, and, um, so, the, uh, the letters went out, went out last week, so myself, I just, I'm, I'm like, uh, a neighbor next to the property, I just got out of there last week, so, um, I think our chance to interact with this, and to be a part of this, and learn more about this has been limited. I think their chance to reach out to us has been, you know, uh, has been extensive, and they kind of failed to do that, so, uh, we're talking about a good neighbor agreement, and we're talking about somebody that cares about the area, and they have the, almost on them to, uh, make that contact, so...
Thank you.
I have a question, in this, uh, what are...
Get up and speak, you need to...
Oh, go, go, go. I just briefly scanned over this, and it's, uh, question to all of you is that, um, you approved this already.
Stick your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, I'm Sandy Google, I, right in the midst of it all, Industrial Parkway.
She lives directly across the street from us.
I'm at the crossroad.
No, wait, wait.
We're all neighbors.
What was your street address, again?
One 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 nine zero, Industrial Parkway, yes. It says in this letter that he's already approved all this.
The local union should be telling me, the LUC's regional planning.
Correct, is, are you reading the letter, ma'am, that says Logan?
Yes, so...
So, that is one of the advisory bodies to the Board of Township Trustees. But the Board of Township Trustees, who are your duly elected representatives of the one, one two, as a matter of law, must make the final decision. So, the Township Zoning Commission and the Regional Planning Commission will provide a recommendation to these folks, their recommendation is just that, as a matter of law, it's non, neither one of them are binding, that's correct, is the bridge, okay? So, those are just informational, and the...
But you have to make the final decision.
These three folks are gonna have to make the final decision.
That was my, that was my question.
Yep.
I stick with this, this sound of this reading and that, all right.
Well, most people don't know what LUC means, and so it's...
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Carolyn Bean, one one five seven five Industrial Parkway, and one one five four one Industrial Parkway, and I just want to say that we have received no letter or notification of any kind at St. Austin, we have, I'm not sure, uh, we found out that there was something going on when, similar to, um, some of the other neighbors here, we had surveyors marking out our entire property for, I think, a one hundred foot setback, flag all over the place, so, as far as a good neighbor agreement is concerned, um, it feels like our property is probably impacted because of the survey that took place, however, we have received absolutely no outreach notifications of any type, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Chairman, if I can respond, this is being the reason you have not received notifications, because your property is not touching the site, okay? State law says what note, lays out the entire process for rezone, so the site that's subject to this rezoning is a hundred and eighty-seven acres to the south of your property. So, that's a great example of why my office puts up the yellow sign, that's one example, but the, the folks that receive notice in the mail are the folks that are, have a common property boundary with the, the site, or their common property boundary is separated only by a public highway, basically, complicated way of saying, "Across the street problem." Okay, so that is why you did not receive notice by mail.
Thank you for that answer. We do live right next door to Carl, room three twenty-one, our property is adjacent to theirs, so, given the sound parameters that were outlined in Mr. Nolan's excellent document, I would say we do, it definitely would be impacted, and if we are not in the scope of the, uh, project, then I don't understand why it was so necessary to put extensive flags across our entire road front, which, four hundred foot setback.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, I'd be happy to speak with you and your husband. The reason, mister, I'm not saying you're not impacted, whether someone is impacted or whether someone receives notice are two different things, other than...
We don't have knowledge of this survey.
Yeah, we don't have...
As an unwanted body.
Yeah, and I don't know.
It feels like we're probably in the scope, given the extent of the survey, I just would encourage you to question if you fully understand the full scope of the project.
We don't know if...
We don't even know who the end user is, the property owner doesn't tell us who they may be contracted?
I did that, when I was doing...
I wish we did.
I wish, as you want. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Pete, what are our options here?
Can I do a quick, uh...
You're, you are signed up, so, yeah, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Joseph Unger, one zero one five nine, Mesut DeWitt, Plain City, four three zero six four, uh, just a couple double foot comments, uh, I live down very brief on Mesut DeWitt, where there's another data center, um, in, in proximity, and we'll say there is a general disregard if we just do one in particular town. And I want to encourage everybody, uh, if you get the agenda right here, that has two signs on it, right above, there is an email address, and you'll, uh, email, and you'll get notices in, uh, any, uh, meetings, and the reason everyone's in the dark is, you know, this company's been in the process, uh, basically keep out and keep the community from galvanizing support, uh, and making the face of the family after them, so everybody needs to be aware of the meetings. No matter what the decision is tonight, if there is a decision tonight on the rezoning, uh, that's not the end of the process, and everyone needs to continue the process and kind of...
Well, for the record, I haven't signed in NDA.
Well, that's the reason that nobody has the information.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, none of I have not signed an NDA either.
I wasn't, I wasn't implying that government officials are handling zoning work, it's not a commission NDA, it's the people in the process of sales, so no information into that.
Yeah, it has to do with the property owner, so, you know, zoning regulates uses and buildings and structures, not people, and I say that in the sense that property can be bought and sold without a zoning regulation, uh, being involved. Mr. Unger, it's perfectly fine for folks to email that address, and keep in mind that that is for the Board of Trustees' means, there's separate notification lists for the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Zoning Commission, which are other public bodies, again, happy to, to help through all that with our team here, but just note that the address on there is for Board of Trustees' means, which is your three eleven trustee.
You'll get the agenda, but all of our notices are on our township website for the zoning meeting, and you can request that information and be on a list for all of them.
Just to clarify, you have to submit three different requests for the zoning appeals.
Correct, we'll, we'll help you.
Can we get those email addresses, if they, you know, the...
We'll, we'll, sure answer, yes, we'll help you.
Pete, I ask...
So, I don't know if you want to give Mr. Ducker, if he's interested in...
Yeah, I mean, this is very similar to the hundred and eight acres, is that right, or am I different, Eric? Am I wrong, Eric?
Yeah, I think there's another...
I'm not signed up. Just, sorry, I...
It's okay, come...
Uh, CJ Winja, I'm at one 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 six six Industrial Parkway, I'm a little square, around a hundred and eighty-seven acres, whoops, and, um, I have a question, is this just to rezon it, and then once they decide how they're gonna use it, you get to vote on it again? Or is this a deal?
No.
Okay. Okay, so my question is, first off, we have farm tiles through that, and it has come into our property before because they were downhill, I'm assuming, is there something in all of this legally that they can't do that? They break a farm tile and send water into our property?
I'm gonna, um, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board, I'm gonna let Mr. Ducker answer that, what the question is here is essentially, what's the process for stormwater regulations? If Mr., because that's not a zoning regulation. If Mr. Ducker answers it incorrectly, I'll jump in and give the best, as best I can, but but given, given, I'm, I'm not saying he will, a little, um, but that's not a zoning regulation.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, that's why I want to know, because it's an issue.
We'll, we'll let Mr. Ducker answer it first, when he comes back up to speak.
Okay, so we, I can't stand your answer, so, okay. Um, the other thing is light pollution, like, you remember the meat farm down the road? It was all the light, somebody got him to shut them off, but we are right there, so, that's no issue. And then the other thing is on that little circle that he had, I'm right there in that circle.
For sound?
Yeah, and like I said, the, um, backup generators down at whatever the tire place is, you can hear those from here, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Pete, man?
Sure.
They grasp one one two zero project, so not correctly, not too far away. So, uh, it's free to this pamphlet that provided to us. And it brings up a lot of interesting points. I think if all these were met, we'd feel a lot more comfortable. But my question is, are they going to be met? And who's going to guarantee that they're going to be met?
Well, if there is zoning resolution, they will.
For example, the business would design, construct, operate, and maintain to be harmonious and appropriate. Who decides harmonious? In the side of the cabinet, I care if you're harmonious and appropriate in my living. I'd say you're crazy. Who decides that? Where does that define within your book what harmonious and appropriate?
So sir, what, the question you're asking there, that section you're referring to, is a conditional use permit?
Yeah, if you approve a conditional.
Right, so that would only apply...
For a conditional use, I, I understand.
For uses that are designated as conditional, they would be something that the Board of Zoning Appeals would consider when considering that type of application.
It's like the judicial branch of the Board of Trustees.
It's a different process, that's not what it's...
Still, if you approve a conditional use, then that brings this into play.
Yes, that would be the board of zoning.
Then who's going to guarantee that?
Board of Zoning Appeals.
Say it's harmonious and the neighbors say it's not harmonious.
That would be addressed in the hearing, in a hearing for a conditional use permit, the, the public can co, can comment in the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So that's a different...
Not be hazardous or disturbing to existing neighbors.
It's the same thing.
What's disturbing?
Well, noise could be disturbing.
A lot of these businesses you approve right now are disturbing. And you're already buying them. Go down to number three. No land or building in any district shall be occupied or used in a manner which creates or contributes to the existence of conditions that are dangerous, injurious, harmful, noxious, or infectable. You determine that, what, what's the criteria for each one of those items, and you understand what the criteria that you're going to use to evaluate each one of those items. If this business that goes in there actually meets all these, you might, you can't hear it, you can't smell it, you can't see it, it doesn't affect us, it doesn't affect the quality of our life, doesn't affect our property value, doesn't affect our safety, get started on it. But who's going to guarantee that? There's a lot of questions, it, it sounds a little paperless, but what's each one of those items mean, and what's your criteria that decides you have that item that you've laid out right here on your page? And if we decide you have it, I mean, do you have legal ramifications?
Well, yes.
Do you want me to answer, yeah, do you want me to answer the question? Can I answer the question?
Yeah, sure.
So the standards that you're citing are for when somebody comes in to apply for a conditional use permit. So there are permitted uses, right? Those are things that are, are handled, if the rezoning is approved, be handled by Mr. Snowden in his office if they meet the general development standards in their zoning resolution. Those are permitted uses. The standards you're citing are for conditional uses, conditional use permits. Those are uses that may be permitted, but only upon approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is a separate body from this, from the Board of Trustees. So there would actually be a hearing in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a conditional use permit. The applicant would need to come in, file an application, notice would be sent. Uh, contiguous adjoining properties do have legal standing on a conditional use permit to, to challenge, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Unlike the trustees under, under a conditional use permit, the Board of Zoning Appeals also has the ability to place conditions upon the application. Okay, but that is, you don't get to that point un, unless the property is rezoned. So to, to, you're, you're almost getting the cart before the horse with respect to conditional uses. Uh, they're not eligible to, to apply for those conditional uses in front of the V C A unless the property is rezoned. So, but to answer your question, the Board of Zoning Appeals would review those standards. You got a very good Board of Zoning Appeals here, and they can place conditions to address noise, uh, light, uh, sound we have in the past and, and will continue to do to, continue to do those type of things with the residents. Yeah, and I would do the reporting.
And back into a meeting and explain to the residents, sometimes it's just real general or gray.
Yeah.
We need the details.
Well, it's all available, and in fact, our Board of Zoning Appeals are members of the community, they live here. Um, they are our neighbors here in town as well, but if all this information is available to the public at all times, it's... Not a lot of people like to sit through these meetings, so I'm glad you're here, we're glad you're here.
I mean, I sat through a meeting a couple, three years ago, we went through this process, uh, approved, seen all the plans they put up, tried by that property the other day, and I don't know why, that's one of the things I don't think that... Where's the fences, where's the landscaping? Have you seen, see, built a landscape, and that's not what was on there?
I don't know what property you're talking about.
It doesn't matter, but, uh, you know, we could go to a lot of the places you've approved, and we probably not be very happy today with the final result.
It's all in text.
How many not gone through the details? How many not gone through these details?
Well, like we said earlier, there has been cases where a developer, a developer has not followed through.
Not dangerous, not harmful, not, not, not...
That's a different board.
Thank you.
It's a different...
I, I just want to comment that what is being proposed here is a rezoning of commercial property, and the data center currently is not a conditional use.
That's correct, it's a permitted use.
It's a permitted use.
So that would be reviewed administratively, so... Correct, by Mr. Snowden's office, to determine whether it complies with the current...
What this thing, which of all those points are for that?
Right, but that, but those don't apply to permitted uses. I think the point I'm trying, Mr. Trustee Adler is trying to make is, the things that you're citing are only for conditional uses. There are other permitted uses that those standards don't apply to.
There should be standards for permitted uses too.
There are, there are.
There should be, and this is...
There is.
There is.
And I have the same concerns and questions with that list of items as I view this.
Same question, same...
We should meet. Yeah, and I, I think everybody's chamber.
Yeah, I am, I was here for, like I said, this, this user chair, and I guess we're property by, say, neighborhood, barn, you know, all of this.
And it is, it's a balance because property, landowners have rights too, so we have, it's a balance. So that's why we have a zoning resolution book, it's about this thick, I don't know, it's about this thick? Maybe this thick, with all the rules around how you can develop your property. And we'll get you one.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think if Mr. Duggar would like to come up and talk about, um, the one residence you referred about, stormwater, and anything else that you would like, if you're asked, based upon, based upon comment tonight.
Yeah, sure, um, just a couple of things. Um, when we fill out an application, we split the, uh, zoning staff. It contains, uh, certification of, I think it's, it's pointed out, those residents who are, uh, taxpaying residents of those residents who are adjacent to our office. I think I looked at it, number twelve residents on that list. Um, Mr. Sealy criticized us that we hadn't reached out to those people. They get noticed, as described by Ohio law, at the appropriate time.
I mean, you have the appropriate time, how long do you need to work on that?
Hey, we're, the public's here to witness the business of the board hearing, and we've, uh, provided everybody an opportunity to make, uh, comment. Mr. Duggar's got the podium right now, and we're listening to him.
So, uh, we, you know, we go to these hearings, and, and if there are people here, you know, we could link in, so I think, so we'll go. Um, we, I might, we engaged with Mike on the hundred and eighty property to the north, if they felt we were aware of that. Um, but we hadn't really received any indication. I think Eric, if you go back to the one, uh, pathos and why, there were very, very few, uh, immediately adjacent residential suburban neighbors. It's all, it's all street. One lady had a question about the, uh, stormwater, obviously we surround her on three sides. Um, the stormwater is governed by Ohio law, and we can't put more water on you after development than there is something on you to that. So this, part of this development will be, have to be submitted to the county engineer for their approval. We will provide detail, regardless of the use, uh, we will provide detailed, uh, stormwater calculations, stormwater routing, and to be sure that the development of, the eventual development of this property doesn't, quote, flood you out. You're not allowed to put any more water on you than they're, than you are receiving from that property, that, under Ohio law. Am I right?
I would go further and say that the, whenever the place is developed for any use other than probably a single-family one, which won't be a permitted use anymore, they will have to submit plans, whoever's doing the development, drawn up by a certified engineer to work in the state, to the county engineer, whose team, which includes a certified engineer, will review it for compliance with the applicable stormwater regulations, and order, and if necessary, order any changes, bigger pipes, more ponds, that sort of thing, to comply with the statewide regulations for storm.
And then courses, you don't think of the state law?
So, yeah, submitted through by the county, so you, yeah, you...
But it's, uh, it's a state law, so like our law, okay.
Correct, it, it, there's a... It's a trade law, two private property.
And the county engineer is the, is the reviewing, of course, in fact, as we put it. Um, are there any other questions that I need to ask? Okay, thanks very much.
Uh, Mr. Adler had a question.
Just to suggest to the other trustees that we continue this meeting to allow the applicant the opportunity to interact with the adjacent and develop any, any neighbor agreement. Agree with the other trustees. So I, I guess I'm proposing that we continue this meeting to future...
Okay, at this meeting? I mean, one challenge we have, that we're discussing the rezoning, and we're getting on a lot of different tangents that may or may not apply later. We don't know, you know, what's going to happen. We're here to talk about one thing, and I've allowed everybody to talk about a lot of different practices, uh, because we had such a crowd here, and I wanted to make sure they kind of had a general understanding of what was going on. But we're asking to rezon this from rural residential to commercial district. I'm okay to continue the hearing to the next, next meeting? We could, we could close, close the hearing and render a decision at the next meeting? Or we could vote, those are our choices. Vote up or down?
I'd rather continue at the here, what potential neighbor agreement was developed between the applicant and the neighbors to make sure that the neighbors are more satisfied with landscape buffering for this commercial rezoning.
I'm okay continuing, where are you at?
Mr. Duggar, are you fine with that? Will you speak with these other residents that were not aware?
Uh, sure, um, I think the way we conducted ourselves, um, on the hundred and eighty acres, is the way we conducted ourselves here. I think Mr. Nolan would acknowledge... How many times did I meet at your house?
At least three or four.
Yeah, okay, I've got a nice couple of chairs, Mr. Nolan's house.
There we go.
So, so we, you know, um, I think many of the concerns, as Mr. Nolan learned, are already addressed, and, and so what is incumbent on me is to kind of get some education going on, some of this. Um, the, the things about the survey and all that, I don't have any idea what that, that is, so I, I don't know how to address that issue whatsoever. So I, I think we need to have some clarity on the, in terms of what, you know, the kind of questions that I can ask. But yes, I'm, I'm, I'm more in favor of us until the, the, once it actually makes a third?
Mr. Nolan, I hate to appoint you, but can you make sure that the neighbors have the information or the contact information? It's orchestrated so Mr. Duggar knows, knows who he's talking to? Are you aware of the neighbors that are...
Not really, well...
I'll, I'll probably also chat.
Yeah, I, I'm not even helping.
Or make, make sure that he knows how to contact.
The other thing too, Mike, if we help this point, I'm sorry, I'm going to hijack the meeting. Um, you might want to share with, uh, some of the people who are due to this process, the good neighbor agreement, so that, that you have some idea about what the process was that we went through before.
Yeah.
Okay, so here?
Huh? Oh, you mean, please?
Yeah, I, I, you know, not now, not now, no.
I do have one last comment, I don't allow not to deliver this.
Okay.
So, to, to address the question that you're asking, we, I'm not sure about dates and, and all that, but as a general principle, we don't have any, any... I don't go looking for fights, so I tend to not contact neighbors, but when they show up, we talk, so.
Okay. All right, uh... Question one more.
On the neighbor issue, do we have some sort of, uh, like a way to say, you know, what's, how did we all get together on that?
Yeah, I can't. Was there one more comment for up at the podium?
I, Nolan, did you...
Should be wrapping himself.
I'm sorry, just, thank you. Um, do you need a name and address? Um, this one is good neighbor agreement, yes, um, Mr. Duggar and Mr. Greenley, the, the, they did come out to our house multiple times, brought desserts, and, uh, we, we had some very good discussions, open, honest, and I feel what I felt then, I still feel like we are on the same wavelength. I think they want the best for the neighbors, um, and they seem to be in agreement with what we were asking for. The whole thing with the, with the, the division along Industrial Parkway, the, the viewscape, um, I am totally in support. I, I think the problem we have here, all of us that have talked about intruders basically coming onto our properties, they weren't just along the road, okay? Back in June, they were along the road, and we asked, because they were parked in our driveway, and my wife couldn't get in. She said, what are you doing? Oh, we're doing this, we're in the right of way, we can do this, okay, fine. It was a month later, and they actually surveyed my whole property, and then I got a letter in the mail wanting to buy it. There, I just shared that, okay? Enough is enough. We understand how these big corporations work. I've worked in the automotive, automotive industry for forty-five years, I've worked with the big, the big ones, okay? I've dealt with them, they're negotiating rooms. I understand, they have lots of power, they're very big, they decide what they want, and they do it. That's what's happening here, I feel, however, we can't get any confirmation from anybody. Eric, I'm sorry, I appreciate your friendship, and I appreciate your working with this. We just simply want to know, if somebody says, hey, there will be no data center, and I think you will see all of us not show up, but say thank you, we're glad that we saw. However, we have nothing so far to show us that there is not a good chance of not only one, but maybe multiple data centers. And I won't share any of my sources, I've had enough different ones, and I think other people have had similar experiences. The only reason I could put this thing together to share with you all is to say, this, not only from an engineering and a sound and a, and a music standpoint, I have lived this for the last thirty years, and once we start getting noise from the factories two and a half miles away, I have no, I wouldn't be surprised, what I've been reading about how it helped, affects health, cardiovascular. I don't know if that caused my triple bypass that I had just two years ago, if it contributed or not. Doctors couldn't figure it out, they said I shouldn't have had it. I, all I can do, and you'll probably see it in my face right now, I was really stressed. For two years, I bought it, I bought it. At the city of Marysville, I talked to the mayor, the economic development director, the, the attorneys, the, the facility. Facility said, after a year and a half, they finally agreed on, just to be a good neighbor, basically to do a study. They had somebody come out, walk around the perimeter of their company, two and a half miles away, take sound readings, and say, see, there are seventy-five decibels. They're within the city of Marysville standards, therefore, no problem. Mr. Nolan, you can't possibly be hearing this, bull crap. And I've got all the data, I went this week preparing... And I've got all the data, I went this week preparing for this, I went through all these files and stuff that I had done 12 years ago, believe me. My blood pressure's up tonight. I didn't know whether to come here or go to the hospital, but it's up because it, it was up 12, 13 years ago in dealing with this. And everybody told me I was crazy. However, once they replaced that compressor, guess what? No more noise. And it's never resumed. So, sorry, I'm not angry, I'm just, am I frustrated? Yes. I just, we're asking you, please listen to people. These data centers do make noise. If globally, it's a known issue, I've got so many stories and videos and things that I have found where people are dealing with this and standing up to it finally. It's not, we're not making this up. We know what's going on right down the road, we've all heard it. And the laws of physics and the laws of acoustics cannot be changed by endless, whether we want to or not. Okay? They're, they're God's laws and that sound is going to flow, flow and we can't control it unless we shut it down. If, if a data center figured out a way to design their system so they don't put sound outside the borders, I think every single one of us would be happy to have one. I would, because it would be less traffic.
I'd like no more data centers in town. Are we able to do more?
And the other thing.
Huh?
Yeah, we need to discuss that.
Last, last comment. On, on the signs issue, I would be happy to put up the money to buy a new sign, the zoning signs.
Oh, we don't need that.
No, no, I, I really am. I'm serious. Because they, they cannot be read because they've been erased so many times. They, I can tell you.
We'll work on that, Mr. Nolan, we'll work on that.
I appreciate that.
I didn't see you talk to Mike about that.
But, but it is true, as Mr. Seeley said, the sign that was down here was, I think it was put up there or two after the trustee meetings, I was here for that, it went up and it has been laying, literally laying flat on the ground since at least Thursday afternoon when I first up. Okay? Now, that same thing, interestingly, happened at the corner lot on the 188 acres a year and a half ago. Okay? And I know because I go up and down that road, it would be laying on the ground. It's amazing how that happens. So I got out with my wife one time and just stomped it in really deep and I don't think it came out after that, but it is important, people want to know what's going on in the community. The worst thing you can do is, is to keep everybody in the dark, especially when there's, we may or may not have great information in our heads and we're, we're getting worked up and we're here and we're showing that we're concerned, all anybody has to do is say, no, it's not going to be a data center. And if a data center is impermitted use, why? It shouldn't be. Because it's louder than most factories that I've been to in the automotive industry. And I walked up to a bunch of them. When I walked, I spent four hours down here, three hours last Sunday afternoon, driving around the, the data centers on Poochel, Poochel, Poochel Road over by Cupland, and the ones around here, they are loud, not in front. They're really quiet on the street, in front of them. I went around where the soccer fields were. Lots of noise. Thank you.
So, Barry, you want to continue to the next meeting? The rezoning competition? Okay. So I move that we continue this hearing to September 3rd, 7:00 PM here at the township hall.
Second.
Roll call. Third, September 3rd. My apologies, thank you.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Crabb?
Yes. Meeting continued. I want to take a 10-minute break.
All right, we're going to start our regular meeting. Thank you for coming out. The time is eight fifty-eight. I'd like to call this Jerome Township Regularized Scheduled Board Meeting to Order August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Roll call.
Mr. Adler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Hudson.
Mr. Kraft.
Present.
We could all rise with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, does anyone have any adjustments on the agenda? Testing his patience. All right, we'll move public safety officer up to five point five. I move we approve the agenda as adjusted.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Adler.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Sheriff.
Excuse me, before I order, you made it five point five per minute, it's been five.
All right, four point five.
I, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I don't have my glasses on here, I'm sorry.
So each of the trustees, clerked, and granted, thank you guys for having here. I dropped off the monthly stats, the top sheet, I believe, if you see that the top says Jerome Township stats, but then the second one says Jerome Township PSO stats. So you have separate stats again, and I would remind everybody that the calls for service average response times, the one that you should be most concerned with, the ones as township procedures you should be looking at is dispatch calls for average response time. That's what you need to be looking at, so that's the most important one there for you guys. Do you have any questions, let me know. Also along with the stat sheets are two flyers. One is for Citizens Academy, it starts September the eighth, it's a safety project. It allows citizens to come learn more about our office and what each division or our office performs and what they do for a daily job. And then the other flyer is a women's firearm safety course, strictly women, cannot identify as one, you have to be one, and it's the first, well, it's the first time we've done this as far as a women's firearm safety class, so if anyone's interested, there's instructions on there and QR code. We're looking at two weekends in October and one in November. Along with that, I'll be leaving right about five o'clock in the morning, we're heading out to Indiana, we're going to be looking at our potential K-9, got a couple of general chore here planners that we're going to be looking at coming into Indiana, so that goes well, if we have that fit down, it's not going to be traveling to another state to look at some other dogs. Office updates, all of our nine-one dispatch positions are spoken for, we have one gentleman that's going back to, he's going through background process, but it appears that that's on track and that should be finished up this month, so this will be the first time in a long time that all of our nine-one dispatchers are filled at the office. We still have, we have two openings in, who's at the office? One is due to the One Ohio grant that pays for half the salary of the K-9 office the rest of this year, so that's the one opening there. And the other opening is because we had let someone go that didn't know what direction he was going after seventeen weeks, and that's a safety issue. Bridgewood Fair is coming up next week, we're going to have our laser shop back at Bridgewood Fair, at the Dade Union County Fair. And the last thing I wanted to update you guys on was part of overtime. Project that we've been working for is traffic. So far through the month of June, from June thirtieth until August seventeenth, we've worked out two hundred and four hours of overtime so far. We've had, done about three hundred and seventy-five traffic stops for the Jerome Township, just the Jerome Township during that period of time. Hundred and ninety-seven were as a result of the overtime detail. As far as citations, we've written in that same period of time, a hundred and thirteen citations, we issued a hundred and forty-three good forms, so it's almost fifty-fifty on that aspect of.
Quick question, is that not reflected in these?
No, no, it's a separate stat altogether.
Separate.
Yeah, because I'm going to keep those stats completely separate than the normal PSO or county stats.
Will we get a copy of this?
Sure. The road that most activity seems to be on is Raven Hill Parkway, we've been pretty close to forty-something tickets just on Raven Hill, so, so, it goes Rock, Cedar Crest, Rock River, and Mitchell, we went, so we've been all through the county. And then as of right now, as far as criminal cases and reports, we are at a hundred and four this year, criminal reports in Jerome Township, last year there was a hundred and thirty-seven, so we could be on pace to be about the same. And I know that there's been four vehicle thefts down here in this township recently, I would just ask for the community's help, lock your cars, take your key flocks, and take your valuables, and don't leave your guns in the car and vehicles unlocked.
Yep.
So that's, I think, the biggest thing is we need the community's help too, we can secure crime laws in this town, but we need help, lots of help, even though it seems to be safe. There's still that criminal element that does not live in Union County, which is like a very awful people, this township just want to continue to see the transit, so.
Four vehicle thefts, even the cars have been stolen.
Yeah, yeah, anywhere from Mercedes to Cadillac Escalades.
Have they been recovered, or?
Uh, one, one on four, a few others we don't know, I know that the architects are working very diligently on it, and, but it's bigger than just, here takes them away from, I can put it that way, there's information we've already developed from Friday until today, we've got a very, we start off with this. Questions?
I don't have any, I was going to see if Daxson could come, but it looks like you have to be eighteen years old.
You have to be an adult, Dave.
No.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you for all the work that you're doing, also the extra overtime going into putting on traffic control and traffic stops and all that, that helps the public safety and community, so thank you. It is, and it's the staff, so you know, we share the staff, I'll share a bit of them, but the ones that are here, the positive for the community, and you guys, that's really a great impact, it's something that your work's being recognized, so we are, we are blessed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Be safe from.
No, thank you.
All right, well, have a good night.
Thank you. Looking forward to meeting the dog.
Hopefully we get a good one.
Okay, Robert.
Do you have the minutes?
Back to five, I guess.
Minutes of the regular meeting of August fifth?
I move that we waive the reading of the minutes and approve them. Do we have a second?
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Adler.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Do you have the warrants for your pending warrants report, there were warrants forty-five eight forty-five through forty-five eight eighty-seven and ninety-five one twenty-five through ninety-five one twenty-eight?
Move that we approve the warrants.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Adler.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
That's all that I have right now.
Thanks, Robert. Time is nine oh eight, I move that we adjourn into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code section one twenty-one dot twenty-two G one for the purpose of considering compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Adler.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Oh goodness, how's your summer?
It's been great.
Oh, yeah, yeah, here, you know, it's just the.
Yeah, here, you know, it's just, uh, the, uh...
Yes.
Mr. Crabb?
Yes. Brandon, you're up.
Good. In your folders, you should see a copy from the manifest. This is the quote for the IT work to be done in the new building. It's for $16,000, 73947. This was in consideration of the budget, so this is all included in that. We just need your approval for this, please.
I move that we accept the quote.
Sorry.
Okay.
They're slightly behind. They anticipate being on target, but I believe they're in the fifty percentile range right now. If they're indoors.
Did you say his additional time's about five thousand dollars so far? Is that where you have the ten?
Yes. Yeah, so far, yes.
Robert, is it still all within the budget range for this?
Yes, I think so.
I move that we go ahead and extend the contract for additional up to ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And you should... Oh, you've heard enough from me this year. We are working on the Colobarium just real quick. The rates and the cemetery rules that you promised we'd get to you that helped with cracks recently with everything else but going on. But we should have that to you for the next meeting for consideration. They laid the foundation today. So that project's on track, and my understanding is, is the finished product will be delivered in October, which is way ahead of schedule. So we'll get that up and running. That ends my report for Fire Road Zone.
On the road, did we want to discuss the Kubota?
Yes, I've got, I thought that was next under Old Business.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you were going to talk. I didn't see it there. Go ahead. Okay.
All right. So Vince, under Old Business, Vince and Kenny had done more research. They found a new Kubota that, brand new, with Green and Sons in Mount Sterling, Ohio is where it's going to come from. See, you should have a copy of requisition. That total is twenty-three thousand three hundred. And they found a snowplow from Agpro with a V blade for four thousand nine fifty that will attach. That brings the total up to roughly twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars total for your consideration.
Is this the one that has heat in it?
It's got a cab, yeah.
Okay, good.
Here's a small picture.
And it'll have a hydraulic dump bed, and it will be able to plug.
Yes.
I think plus Vince said with hydraulics.
Yeah.
I read it up, and I think this does make more sense.
I'm glad. I spoke to the road department. I feel very strongly needed.
Do you have any questions on the...
Yeah, why is it expenditure only for twenty-three?
That's just for the Kubota. I think the other forty-nine was for the follow-up.
So it has to be purchased.
Yeah, it's a separate vendor. Yeah, I think Robert has a copy of the records.
That's the... Okay. I think it was in the email. So we don't have to do a motion unless somebody just has to sign.
So I go ahead and do a motion to approve the expenditure just because of the amount.
Over the amount, yeah. What's the most we can do to secure this?
No, it's five thousand.
Yes, five thousand.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't say it? I don't have it.
I make a motion to approve the purchase order expenditure request form for twenty-three thousand three hundred dollars to Green and Sons Limited, the purchase of the new Kubota. Have with heat hydraulic dump bed and mulling gate.
Second.
Roll call.
Adler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Want to just go ahead and do one for the snowplow?
A separate one, yeah. You got it.
It's an Agpro for four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Several.
Roll call.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Thank you. That ends my report.
Eric.
Mr. Chairman and other members of the board, periodically my office comes before you for some housekeeping to the official zoning map. This is not a zoning amendment of any kind. It is purely to physically replace the map because of the number of amendments. LUC draws up a new electronic map. We're doing that approximately once a year. We did this earlier this year, but Brad had went ahead and updated the parcel layers and some other things. So I have a new official zoning map before you. Robert has a resolution. You should have a copy of the resolution. What I need is a motion to approve the resolution to replace the official zoning map. And then I need the three copies signed that Robert has. And I need Robert and Joe, please, to not leave before they sign the three copies of my large map over here. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's not an amendment. It's purely housekeeping, keeping track of cases and what's amended, that sort of thing.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. I move that we adopt a replacement for the official zoning map for Jerome Township.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Let's get this signed before we go any further.
Mr. Chairman and other members of the board, there's three identical resolutions there. Just make sure you sign on the right line for voting.
Is that my pen, Eric? I thought I could let the Durdusman, those Durdusman pens are hard to come by. Perfect, brighter blue.
Well, Brandon, if you need another one, Brandon and I will let you take it.
They're my favorite pens. I'm just kidding.
Brandon will let you take us out for breakfast.
Yeah, every time I sign my credit card, it's up there. I put that baby away in the pocket. And then somebody finds it and they like my pen. All right. We've got a resolution here in front of us to approve the amendment for the Jerome Township Marysville Jett, the Kia development. Does everybody have time to take a look at that?
Yes.
All right, all right. I move that we approve and authorize the execution of the joint economic development district contract filed between the city of Marysville and Jerome Township for Conklin Investments Limited, Conklin, Kia, and commercial outlets extension.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and take a little time here and sign this one, too.
Mr. Caldwell's going to send down a copy of the resolution and then a copy of the actual, a copy of the actual Jett agreement.
I wasn't going to let Robert, Robert do the filling out.
Is there, are these supposed to be?
There's only one signature on these two pages.
Yes, sir.
There's only one signature from the trustees on both of these pages, correct?
That's correct. This has been done correctly. And then here, this has been done correctly as well. Could you just sign there, Mr. Adler? Thank you. We'll have Mr. Caldwell fill out the rest in. Between Debbie and I, we'll get this over to the folks at the city.
All right, being present for the business for the board to attend to, I'd like to go to the announcements. Our regular scheduled Jerome Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, September second, has been changed to Wednesday, September third at seven P. M. Due to trustees attending Mill Creek trustees meeting to thank them and the residents for contribution of a tater to Jerome Township Fire. What time is that meeting, guys?
Seven P. M.
Seven P. M., just like ours. Jerome Township residents will see a fire levy on the November ballot. The levy is a request to renew the current five point eight mil levy due to expire at the end of twenty-five with an additional one mil. Please contact the fire department or trustee if you have any questions for the township. Jerome Township offices will be closed Monday, September first for the holiday. We'll reopen Tuesday, September second at eight A. M. If you'd like to receive notifications regarding the board trustees meetings, please email the townshipoffice@jerontownship@jerontownship.com. The township's always accepting new applications for positions on our zoning boards. Please visit jerontownship website and fill out an application.
Can I add one thing? There is an open house, yes. There's an open house for a new business right next to Kroger on forty-two. It's called Best Frames Learning Center. And the open house is this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, all from ten A. M. to six P. M. Located at one two zero seven eight Sycamore Trace, Plain City, right next to Kroger. People who are very involved in our community, so, and residents...
Three-day open house? That sounds like a marathon, a marathon of open houses.
So they serve educational needs for kids from age three to fourteen. So, very good.
All right, thank you. Okay. Two announcements. One, the office here will be closed Thursday, August, this Thursday, August twenty-first from eight A. M. to one so that the staff can do CPR first aid training with our fire department. And we need to agree on a time for Friday's special meeting.
Oh, I can't be here until nine P. M.
Thank you.
Okay. The last...
Do you remember?
Make a motion to...
Post-adjournments.
Special meeting?
Yeah.
Do we have a special meeting on Friday, August twenty-second at nine thirty A. M. here at the township hall, nine seven seven seven.
Is this... Purpose of...
Purpose is to, one, is we have to create a Turk Board. Need to consult with the chairman. You're building potential wall street and that one falls. Issues. Is that, is there anything else I could say? No, that's right.
Motion amended as to...
Second.
What's the motion? To have the special meeting and then you...
Oh, the second roll call.
Oh, and then you gave the...
I thought it was adjourned.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Yes.